Approval of overnight travel. The district improvement plan update by the superintendent. An update from the superintendent on full day kindergarten. A process, a discussion around process for accepting gifts. Mr. Jackson will present a bid award number 2008-9 for band uniforms. We'll have a brief discussion on the capital plan by Mr. Jackson. We will then have a first reading on the revised policy manual, followed by other matters, and then a journal. Before we start the meeting tonight, though, I did want to just make a brief comment, and I'll ask the superintendent to comment. In today's Sun Chronicle on the city and town, on the headlines at the top of the page, Foxborough Schools in Whole. And there's an article in here about special education program faces nearly $260,000 shortfall. I wanted those that have been following our meeting, or those that may be watching it for the first time, to know that this is an issue that Foxborough School Committee has been talking about for a long time, now for a number of months. When we put our budget together each year, we base it on the number of students that we have. We base it on the number of students in the special needs that are incurred at that time. Over the summer, new children move into the district, and also educational plans change. And while it is true that we saw a spike in increase this year for tuition and other expenses related to special ed, we've talked about this a number of times, that virtually every community in the Hockamock area is experiencing the same thing. We continue to monitor our expenses on a weekly basis. We review them and approve them on a monthly basis, and we have, we are working down that projected deficit. As far as the taxpayers are concerned, we have some revolving accounts, which the article does talk about, which we can use to cover that deficit. But I don't want people to think that the special ed program is not being managed well. It is being managed very well. We have to comply with the needs of our students, and those students have needs, some that are conducted, taken care of in town, and some that are conducted, are taken care of outside of town. And so transportation costs, as well as tuition, are much higher than we planned because of changes that took place from the budget. Chris, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I would thank you. I absolutely agree with everything that you've said, Larry, but I, I look at it also in another way, that I thought the title was unfortunate, because I think that, that that's not what this committee and this school district have been about. We're looking at making sure that all of our costs are in line. We're making sure that, that there's no blame in anything. We certainly could easily have a very cold winter. The town side could have a very snowy winter, and when you try to budget and you end up running in different accounts, we also know that over the next few months, we'll be seeing some, hearing some good news on some of our accounts. And that really is the balance. So that we, what we try to do is so that we keep the public informed, we try to take a snapshot each month publicly, as Larry mentioned, we, we're monitoring this closely. Our special education department, I think, is doing a, doing a wonderful job, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Some of the costs are just going up, just because placement costs are going up, and energy costs are going up, and, and the transportation side. I'm very, very confident that we'll close this gap. We also know that through both the tuition revolving account and the circuit breaker account, that we have enough money to cover it, even if the deficit stays the way it is today. So I don't want anyone to think that we're pitting special education against regular education. That's a very divisive and unnecessary discussion. At the same time, I continue to advocate with my colleagues, and I know with your colleagues from the School Committee Association, for more relief from the state in, in terms of costs around special education. We think it's a critical area for the state to continue to look at and to chime in. I again, again to reiterate what you said, Larry, but more personalize it. I have these conversations with my colleagues, I know that Paul has conversations with his colleagues and the school business officials, and Cindy Vernelli has conversations with her colleagues in special education administration, that there are escalating costs, they're rising costs, but we're, we're very confident we're going to meet the needs and continue to make sure that we meet the needs of all of the students here.
Excellent. The first item on the agenda is visitors. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak this evening? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. Deb Navidl from Spruce Street. This is another one of those monumental occasions that, as a person who sits in the back row, I'd like to recognize, just like the time the EQA came with its report, being able to present a fully revised policy manual is a wonderful thing. And this is a huge effort that the school committee has put forward, and I'd just like to recognize that this is a wonderful time that we finally arrived to. This is also a living document. It's not something that's written in stone, but nonetheless, it's the covenant between the school committee and the community. So I would encourage community members to take a look at it and participate in the first reading and the second reading. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anybody? All right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Craig, are you going to discuss the overnight travel for the Foxborough High School cheerleaders?
Right, yes.
You're gonna do approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, let's, let's do him, even though we'll do the minutes, I'm sorry. Okay. Basically, the, the cheerleaders were supposed to go, be going February 8th through the 12th, which would be tomorrow. However, they didn't qualify the first time around. There's another qualifying event on March 9th, which would give them the opportunity to travel April 4th through the 7th, which actually would be one less school day they're missing. So same location, they'd be going back to Orlando, Universal, and that's really the gist of it.
So you'd like a motion for us to approve the overnight travel for April 4th through 7th?
That's correct.
There's a motion by Martha, the second by Kate, discussion?
Just, I don't know if I need to say that-
I just recuse it.
Okay, recuse myself, because my-
Okay, all right. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 3-0-1. Katie, Katie accused herself.
I abstained.
3-0-0, I'm sorry. All right, thank you for correcting that. The, let's go to the minutes now. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th?
I don't, we're gonna have the discussion.
We'll have discussions, yes. So we have a motion by Katie, a second-
A second.
Second by Martha, discussion. Katie, would you like to-
Yeah, when we talked about the Terranova's, and I know I had referenced a statement about it being our, the number of years that we had been using them in the district, that it's really our, I think it's very important to institution memory, and it's kind of, they're like our intellectual property. So I would like to make sure that that is in fact reflected in the statement. I would like to have an opportunity to review the, review the tape, so that I can be very specific and accurate. So I would like to actually make a motion that we wait until our next meeting. I'm fine with the rest of it, but I would, I feel very strongly that that's important. I mentioned it there, and again, under other matters, and I'd like it to be reflected in the minutes.
All right.
Could Chris speak to that? That actually would give us time to research that, because I'm not sure how many years. I know that, I know, Kate, you mentioned that, and I'd like Debbie Spinelli to take a look and see what, what the records are that we have, so that we, I agree with you, so that we can make sure that we're, we're-
I think it was, we had it for three years, and we did them once before, but I don't, we didn't do them 10 years running, I believe.
I don't know, I, I would-
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I wanna take a look at that.
Okay.
I'll bring you all that I have. You could compare notes.
So Kate has a motion to table the minutes. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor of tailing them to the next meeting? All right, 4-0. And Kate, if you'll just work up your wording, and then get it to Wendy before the next meeting. And if anyone else had any other comments, you can get it to Wendy before we look at them the next time. Okay. District improvement plan update. Dr. Martis, communication and collaboration.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. What I thought I would do now, as we head into the second half of the school year, and we've had opportunities to put different plans together, and as this committee knows well, I hope the public knows from different opportunities in the media, we've spent a lot of time goal-setting and a lot of time being clear about what we wanted to do going forward. And we've always referenced the district improvement plan, so I thought that periodically, over the next few months, we would take part, parts of the district improvement plan, and I'm certainly going to share this and delegate some of this to the appropriate people that are, that are doing much of this work directly. But I thought since we had spent a good deal of time talking about communication and collaboration, that I would raise the, that as our first item. And just to give the public an opportunity, under this one, ensuring equality education cultivated by ongoing communication and shared resources among parents, teachers, town organizations, and residents, residents, is the responsibility of the entire community. And the goal in this is to provide comprehensive and timely information to parents and community members regarding the curriculum, programs, budget, and governance of the Foxborough Public Schools. And so we've had some strategy areas, and I think sometimes it's, it's a good idea to communicate this, sometimes it's a good idea to toot our own horn, in terms of the types of things that we've been able to do. So I thought I'd walk through our, the plan, and just give a brief update in, in each area, and also talk about a couple of areas that we've been looking at, that we may want to extend out a little bit more than what we've, what we previously discussed in, in approving this last year. Post-district policies on the district website for parents, community members, as was mentioned earlier, and our timeline was fall of 2007, spring of 2008. I think we're right on time with that, given our agenda item tonight, and given all the work that's taken place in the district, looking at the district policies and updating. So I feel very good that that's, that goal is going to be easily met.
Chris, on that particular point, we've discussed a number of times, the website itself, and the timeliness of getting information up there, and the timeliness of taking information off. And I know you were looking at-
Right.
-at some alternatives, including some part-time assistance, to really make that a vehicle of communication. Where do you stand on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I have a, I actually have, I've met with a couple of individuals who have a strong interest in this, and I think some real expertise. I have actually talked about this at the central office level, and it's the first agenda item for the administrators' meeting on Wednesday. So I expect that after that, we'll be pulling that together. I'll be coming to the committee with a proposal, with a funding source, to say that this is an area that we think we need to do more work on. At the same time, Paul Bordalotti was telling me last week, or the week before, I guess, in a conversation with, because Paul was, Paul Jackson was involved, that there's a new iteration of the website, of the district website, that will be coming out, we think in the next few weeks. We haven't pinned that down yet, but we have a consultant working on that right now as well. So what I'm thinking about at this point in time is really moving those together, because there'll be some enhancements on that new website, and I think the people who are interested in helping us to make sure that, and I think our two focus points right now are making sure all of our calendars sync together. You actually can go to different calendars and find a little different information, and we're not happy about that. As well as, as you mentioned, making sure that the, that the website is up to date, so that we don't have old information, we can archive that information, so that we don't have old information on, on that front page. We want more current information. So we need someone who was really designated to do that, just getting staffing that we have now. We've spent a great deal of time, I think, as this committee, committee knows, and the community knows, on what I call the technical side of technology. Making sure that our network runs, making sure that our email system is up and running, make sure we have the correct firewalls in there, making sure that all of that is going well, and it is going well, particularly given the history that we've experienced here over two or three years. So I'm very pleased about that. Now it's a matter of taking this to the next level, and making sure that all of our information is accurate, so we're, we're really working on it. The second one, provide grade-level curriculum information to parents at fall open houses, and make curriculum documents and information available on the web to increase availability. That is a current area on the web, that I think is, was very well done. The Ingrid Alardi did a terrific job leading this effort last spring, working with the principals and our curriculum people, and I think that is something that we can look at and check off as, as completed, and, and we'll continue to, to update as we need to. We've been looking, investigating, provide district-wide alert system for communicating important information emergency updates. I, the only thing I say about that is Connected, and we've really purchased that, we've used funding to purchase that, and it's, it's rolling out, I think, very, very well at this point in time. We still have more work to do, and I think it'll take us, you know, take us some time to make sure that, that everything is accurate. It's, it's meshing well with another area on here about our student information system. Power School is really what's driving the information, so making sure our information is accurate in Power School really gives us an opportunity to use the Connected system very well. And, and we're still working on that. We're still putting information and checking information in Power School. So we think that that process is moving along. We've been able to contact people on three or four different occasions now, and the other nice thing about it is that, is that the town, and we didn't even expect that when we were looking at that goal, but the town is also utilizing their system very well, too.
And as I understand it, they had a situation in town where there was a person that was missing, and I was told they were able to send an alert out to all the homes within a certain distance of the missing person's home. So it allowed that larger neighborhood all to search for that particular person. They did find them. So it is a very valuable tool on both the town side, as well as the school side, if what the weatherman says, you'll be using it tomorrow night, I guess.
Not using it. I don't really like to use it that much, so we'll see. Continue posting school budget information, strategic plan, district improvement plan, school improvement plan, update. Again, as I mentioned earlier, that's a work in progress. We have our current budget information is on our front page of our website. The presentation that, that we made here, the presentation, same presentation we made to the advisory committee, is on the website, with, with a lot of the backup information. So we're still trying to be kind, even though we don't have the complete plan in place. The student information, student information, this is one that I think we're, we're going to look closely at. We'll come back with some, some other ideas. Purchase student information program, which allows parents access to timely information regarding their student attendance and performance. We have a student information program, but at this point in time, it's not allowing that, and we're not ready to do that. So I think last spring, when the discussion took place, we thought maybe we would be ready to do that, but we're not ready to do that yet. So we'll come back this spring with some ideas about how to put all that together.
The EQA report cited a high level of absenteeism at the high school. Maybe in your next update, Chris, you can just kind of go over with us, kind of what does the absenteeism look like at each of our schools? And how does that compare with your experience to other communities? Is it something that you're concerned about? Is it something we're working on? Is it something that we think is within tolerable levels?
Sure.
Would be helpful, I think.
Chris, do you think you'll be, you'll be able to come back with the timeframe as to when that, that piece of the student information system will-
I think later in the spring, Katie, yes. Yeah, in fact, I'll, I'd rather have Paul Bordalotti do that directly with this committee.
Okay.
I think that that would make the most sense in terms of an update. And I know that we've actually, we actually talked a little bit about that, too. Improve district and school websites, make them easier to use, faster and more efficient. This actually, in the terms of the timeline, is more of a 2008-9. We'll make better progress on that, even in the next few months. Along with that, teacher use of emailing websites, public phone, rest through school improvement, courage and support communication. That's one that we'll be putting more data in, because it's, in terms of the plan, it's blank right now. But as we evolve over the next few months, with our specific plans, we'll be able to update that as well. So I, I'm very pleased with, with this particular part of the district improvement plan. I think we've made good progress, and I think we'll continue, we still have plans in place to continue to do that, so.
As part of that, were you gonna update us on Metrolec as well?
Yes, yeah, I was either gonna do that under other matters, or I could do it now. In our, at our next meeting on February 25th, we will have a presentation from the Metro, Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, we call them Metrolec. We had an opportunity last week to meet with them. Chief O'Leary put the group together. Two officers from, from Foxborough, Officer Chamberlain, Officer Hodst, and two officers from, one from Medway and one from Franklin, have been heading this up, and they've done an extensive amount of work. They won't show you everything, because we don't want everyone to know all of the data and information that we have. But it'll be, I think it'll be a very impressive, at least from what we saw last week, it'll be a very, very impressive, uh, report, and, and they have a PowerPoint presentation that they're going to put together. So they've now finished Foxborough High School and the Ahern Middle School, and we've given them early indication, although we'll, we'll ask for your approval to continue-
At the elementary, the three elementary-
The three elementary schools. So that will be, the other piece to the, communication piece that I'll put in, and I was also gonna talk about this under other matters, is because it is around safety and security. We have looked at, just the other day, at our voting, and I know that there's been some media attention around voting in schools and all of that. I think this district, over a long period of time, has done, done a very nice job of, of sealing off that area at the Ahern School. We still have some issues with the timing. Most people like to vote exactly when our students are coming to school, which makes sense. And so we're gonna, we're going to be looking at, at that over the next, we have a, we have a May election, May election, is it?
Yes.
Election coming up. Town election only, so we're, we can put some process together on that. And we're, we're starting to develop the calendar for 2008-9, and one of the things that we will put in and advocate for is not having students in school on the presidential election day, knowing that that's gonna be a very popular one, and actually not even having staff at the Ahern. We can move everything here. So we'll be advocating that. And that'll give us some time to look at how the whole process works at the Ahern School, and whether there's some ideas that we have going forward. But it's an area.
Excellent. Okay, Chris, you wanna give us an update on full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, I would have left this to Debbie Spinelli, and I'm actually going to read a letter that she has written. So the, we have put together, listening to last meeting's interest from parents, and making sure that we're trying to be as timely as possible, just to get a little context. We have, in our goal sheet, planned on really having this, this, the first discussion about full-day kindergarten in late February. We've already approved going forward, we have won a grant from the State Department of Education to have five kindergarten, full-day kindergarten programs. But parents, when they were talking to us at the last meeting, asked us about moving up the meeting time, so that we could better inform parents about what we felt was going on, and to have a question and answer. So we have a parent information session scheduled for all incoming kindergarten parents, kindergarten students, their parents. The information session will be held on Thursday, February 28th, and we'll get this out across all the media and on our websites. We've gotten this out, we've put this mail around to parents, the parents that are on our list, but we'll make sure this is also on the Foxborough Reporter. Information session, February 28th, it's a Thursday, from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the Borough School Auditorium. And we've put in some of the highlights, some of the highlights you can expect to hear include, in order to fund the cost of running a full-day program, families who choose full-day will be charged a $2,500 tuition fee. Reduced to free tuition may be available to families below certain income levels. In addition, there will be a discount for families with twins or other multiples, and we haven't quite figured that out yet. That's another meeting that I have to have to try to figure out how that, we'll, we'll be asking other communities what they do about that, but we know we have, we believe we have quadruplets coming in, in '09, so it's just a little, I think we have five sets of twins that are registered now for next gen. All kindergarten children will be eligible for before and after-school care through our extended day program. We think that's going to be a real benefit to this. The full-day kindergarten program will offer additional opportunities to students to learn and explore concepts, the development of the appropriate activities and experiences. More information will follow about what parents should expect to find as differences in the full and half-day programs. That's a question that's come up that we expect. However, we feel strongly that both the half and full-day options are solid choices for our youngest learners. Parents know best which option would be right for their child. And we'll, just to close this, we'll also have the elementary principals will be present. So we believe that will be a good session. If, if we need another session or two, we'll certainly make sure that we schedule those. But I wanted to make sure that the public knew that we have really responded, I think, moved this up to a point where I think it will, it will be timely. We know parents have issues and concerns around making commitments to other options, so we're really trying to get a, a good handle on this quicker than we would have anticipated last fall.
One other thing that we did, we discussed at the advisory committee, for those at home, we have a charter school here in Foxborough, and a number of our students go to that charter school. And for every student that goes to the charter school, we have deducted from our cherry sheet, from our aid from the, from the state, approximately $10,000, Chris?
$10,500.
$10,500 per student. Now, we spend about $7,500 a student, is that about right?
Yes.
On a Foxborough student. So every student we lose to the charter school, we're losing $3,000 a year, in essence. We're losing the whole $10,005, but we're paying them more than we're, than we're funding our own students here in Foxborough. And there is some evidence that says that because of their full-day kindergarten program, that they've picked up a number of students every year in the full-day kindergarten, the ones that they have, for the kindergarten, they stay grades one, two, three, et cetera. So we lose them forever. And one of the things that we talked about is, is being able to sit down, we're not looking as, at least I'm not looking to make money on the kindergarten program. So when we talked about $2,500, we talked about that in terms of, this would be the incremental cost to the school system, divided by the number of students, and it would cost parents about $2,500. But what I would like the commit, I'd like to hear from the committee, is if we could, I'm just gonna say hypothetically, but let's just say five students that were going to go to the charter school. And we know what the history is every year, so if every year it's X number of children, we can see. If we end up being able to attract more students to us, and less to the charter school and the kindergarten, thereby, for every child that doesn't go there in kindergarten, we receive that extra state money, whether or not the committee would be willing to use some of that extra unplanned excess money to reduce the $2,500 fee that a parent would be charged for the kindergarten. So again, the idea would be, we want the kindergarten to be as inexpensive as possible. If we can attract some students to stay in Foxborough rather than go to the charter school, and as a result, our revenue goes up, using that incremental revenue that year to cover the, the cost while they were in the kindergarten program. Is that something that you would intend?
Makes perfect sense. Perfect size. Just wait and see what the numbers are.
Exactly.
If we can lower it, then we lower it.
It's, it's important, you know, some people, I have expressed a little concern that, that it seems like we're rushing the kindergarten program. And we certainly could say, let's wait another whole year and get it, get it perfect. But there's lots of people that really want this program, and we have a, an assistant superintendent who was in charge and implemented and developed the program in another community, and we believe that we can put a good program in, in place in September, we can address the needs of the parents. But I think it's also important for those parents to recognize that I think that the school committee is not only committed to putting the program in, but putting it in at the least expensive cost possible to those parents, without sacrificing quality at all.
No, I, I absolutely agree with that.
I think it's interesting, though, one's perspective, because you say, you know, there's been a rush since my children have been younger, which, probably, you know, eight years ago, I've been wanting full-day kindergarten. So I guess, you know, I, I think that a lot of communities have put in full-day kindergarten, they're taking advantage of these grants, and I definitely support what you're suggesting, Larry, in terms of having, you know, the ability to offset those costs, if we're able to, depending upon the numbers.
So if the committee's interested in that, then we would, we'd have Mr. Jackson work with the, with Randy Scollins, the finance director, and try to understand, how does all that timing work? And then we'd kind of come back and look at, what, what is the last four or five years, the number of students we've lost to the charter school for kindergarten? And we look at this year's enrollment. And so the point might be, there may be a way to say that there's a $2,500 fee, but there's an opportunity after the year begins to reduce that fee, if we have additional revenue as a result of the charter school. And I don't know how all that timing would work, but it's not something we'd be looking for as a windfall to supplement other programs. We'd want to use it right towards here, because that would be a real advantage to us, not having to, to pay out $10,500 to, to the charter school for those students.
I personally think it makes sense to research that. My only concern is that I don't want to raise the expectations of parents until we have all of the data from that research. I think, educationally, absolutely. Katie, in 1994, we moved here. Full-day kindergarten was coming. It was gonna be mandated by the state under Ed Reform. By '96 and '98, my kids were out of kindergarten. It still isn't coming. I would just say that I think we have to, we have great educational programs. I'm excited. We have to remember that we are funded through grants. The cost of this, if it's a $250,000 cost, and maybe we'll have experience to bring it down, but we have to balance the parents, our students' and parents' needs also with taxpayers'. I love the idea that we'd be able to reduce it. The question is, moving forward, we, I don't want to leave people with the expectation that we're going to be able to fund without grants, or long-term, a $250,000 annual expenditure. So I'm excited that we're doing this. I think, yes, we should look into this, but I want to be cautious until we have all of the facts, because we may find that if we, you know, if there's additional revenue somewhere, we may need to apply that money elsewhere in, for CIP or elsewhere in the budget. So I think it's the right direction. I think this year we'll have a lot of experience under our belt, and we should, you know, keep it front and center so that everyone is, knows where we are with it.
Well, I think it's important for people to plan on the $2,500. But I would like to try to commit to see if we can bring that cause down, if possible, without impacting quality. And if we could, it'd be nice to do that. I'm not saying it'll ever be zero. You're right, there's no way it's probably going to be zero. But if there's a way you could bring it down $100 or $150, then I want the parents to know that we're committed to try to do that, if the committee is serious about that.
There are many parents that know that it's going to be a $3,500 to $4,000 expense. So if we can do it, and in a way, we brought down the cost, because it's $2,500. So if we can bring that down more, I'm all for that, because I think it's a great educational opportunity and a service that we provide both students and parents. But I just want to be cautious that we don't go too low, and that's money that we may not have moving forward in the future.
Absolutely.
Larry, one other point, aside from the cost, which is mentioned in this letter, which I think, again, probably needs as much attention as we can, is that in Debbie's letter, she says, "We feel strongly, both the half and full-day options are solid choices for our youngest learners, and parents know which option is best." But again, for those parents who choose not to, whether it's financial or any other reason, that they feel that it's not in their child's best interest, that, again, you know, that once the curriculum is developed, that that's really detailed, so that parents can have that information.
You're right.
Because I think that there, we don't want people thinking that if they go to full-day, that those children that don't are going to be missing something, so.
Great point, Katie. Okay.
If I may, I'd also just like to comment. I think it's, I was very excited to see that on the minutes were amended, and we were very specific, putting in the minutes how we, there was a consensus that we did not want, that all school committee members agreed that we did not want a lottery. I only want to bring that up again because it was in the Foxborough Reporter, and I did get some calls from parents, so. And that, I think, was the biggest hesitation, because they're under a timeline with outside private kindergarten, kindergartens to make a decision. And the one thing they didn't want to say, yes, although they preferred to come here, and this was becoming quickly their first choice, they didn't want to lose a slot. So I think it's important to reiterate that we are not going to have a lottery. That should we get more students than we believe we can cover under the $250,000 with the grant, under those costs, then we will come back and find money this year to make sure that we add on.
Just to make it clarify for me, Chris, the state grant per classroom is how much?
$15,000 per class.
So it's 15 times five classrooms?
Good, we're committed to five classrooms.
Right, so the state grant that Kate's referring to is $75,000, not $250?
No, the total cost, $2,500 times, we have, what, 100 students, 104 students, potentially?
But the state grant that we're getting to outfit?
Offsets that, but we're still collecting $2,500 times 100, 104, so.
Right, okay. The next item on the agenda, I put it on, there was an editorial in the Foxborough Reporter. And in that editorial, they raise a question over some gifts recently accepted by the school committee. And they, for instance, one comment says, "Targeted gifts, particularly this magnitude, can't help but raise questions about fairness and equity. Mindful of the implications, some communities have imposed gift caps on the amount of an individual or a family can contribute to lessen the potential for favoritism. Others have opted to limit overall contributions from outside sources in a fiscal year." And the Foxborough Reporter had called for us to consider that. I've not made any public statements relative to the gift that my wife and I made, but I want to make it clear, we held off on the gift for the uniforms until our only child graduated from Foxborough High School. So that he, although he's not very happy about it, because he'll never wear one of those uniforms. But we felt so that there would not be a criticism, that we would not make a direct gift for something like that, that he would benefit from. We also have no relatives in Foxborough, nor are there any relatives intending to move to Foxborough. So I don't see any particular conflict whatsoever with the gift that we gave. We made the gift publicly because we were encouraged that if we did something publicly, rather than privately, that others might be willing to come forward. And the Spinneys did mention that as one of the many things that motivated them to donate the gift. And so, since the Foxborough Reporter has raised questions about this, and whether there should be caps, I thought we would spend a few minutes talking about caps in general, and whether this committee would think that capped on a gift, if someone wanted to come and donate a million dollars, would we say no? If someone wanted to donate $10,000, you know, what kind of a cap would be reasonable? Does the committee believe in caps? And I thought we'd hear from Chris on, since he is Superintendent of the Year, and he's been so involved with so many school districts.
I knew this was going to come back to bite me at one point.
Chris could maybe share some information on communities that may or may not. I saw, just in the news last week, a, I think it was a $25 million grant to Phillips Academy of Andover. Very, very large, if it wasn't $25 million, it was a very, very large amount of money. And I don't know that somebody might not want to give a lot of money to the Foxborough school system. And I'm, for one, not in favor of caps, but I thought, since the Foxborough Reporter raised the question, that we would at least have that discussion here. So I will open it up for the committee, for you to share your thoughts and ideas. I'm sure you've had a chance to see their editorial. If not, it's right here, if you'd like to read it. But I'd like to hear what you think as a committee. Martha?
First of all, I'll be honest with you, I was very taken back by the editorial. Sometimes I wonder where in the name of God they come up with some of this stuff. And I was, I guess I will put it nicely, I was very annoyed when I read it. I think for anybody to put a cap on any kind of donation or sponsorship in any given town, I think you'd have to be out of your mind. We've had people donate large sums for scholarship money that have been put in trust and handed down to our students and handled very appropriately. I would never vote to put a cap on any kind of a donation that anybody wanted to make to the school system, to this town. I think you'd have to be out of your mind to put a cap on it. And I just, sometimes I'm just taken back at the thought process that goes into some of these editorials. And personally, I take exception to what they wrote, how they wrote it. I just, I, sometimes I can't believe what winds up in a local newspaper, and I personally was affected by it. So I think I would never vote for any kind of a cap on a donation. If people are that generous, if they're that kind, that concerned, that dedicated committed to our schools, our towns, I think a very nice thank you is appropriate. And I think that's what we need to be doing, not turning our backs or wondering or contemplating. It's unbelievable.
Well, you know, Martha, one of the things that was interesting is it wasn't just the band uniform that they referred to. They referred to the donations that we made so that we could kick off the new nonprofit foundation, educational foundation. And again, I have no, we have no children in the school system. We don't intend to have any more children to put in the school system. We have no relatives that are in the school system. And so the, that, those gifts that were donated to kick off the foundation are not anything that will benefit Judy or I directly. Indirectly, my view is that they may help a student someday who goes on to solve cancer, or solve some other, makes a discovery, or there's something that is, just changes the world. And yeah, then we'll all benefit from that. But again, I just want to reiterate to the public that Judy and I did not make any of those donations, whether it be the athletic equipment, or whether it be the band uniforms, or whether it be for the foundation, because we expected anything in return, or because we would benefit any way in return. There is absolutely no relative of mine in the school system, nor any contemplation of any relative being in the school system for the years to come.
I think the other thing that takes me back a little bit, and Larry, I knew you in Mansfield, and I know how committed you were to that town and the things that you did there. And you always did things in a very quiet, unassuming way, and never looking for thanks. And I was one of the people that did encourage you to put a name to the donation, that I thought it was important that people understood how committed you were to Foxborough. You not only sat on this committee, but you believed in what you were doing and what you had to offer this town. And when we started talking about putting together a foundation, you were one of the first people to jump on board and said, "I've got some things that we could, I can give you that will help jumpstart this." And I was taken back. I was very humbled by the fact that you are so committed to this town and to the school committee and to the school system. And it was a very generous offer, and not one that I took lightly. I was very appreciative of the fact that you are this committed to what we're doing. And it's, I think it's incredible, and I think you do need, people do need to understand that your heart and soul is in this, and what we're trying to do here. And I just, I don't know, I'm just taken back at people's thought process sometimes.
Katie?
Well, I think that, as you mentioned, Larry, private schools do this. And I think that in these very fiscally constrained times, if we can find revenue from other sources of generous individuals or families that are willing to donate to our school system, I think it should be embraced. But I also think that the nonprofit foundation that you just mentioned, Martha, is, again, another example of trying to be innovative and trying to look for other revenue streams. And I think that one could look at these gifts or donations to the school system benefiting only the school system. But in reality, it's not just benefiting the school system. If we're able to use these donations for things that normally we would be requesting, CIP items or whatever they may be, it puts less of a burden on the total revenue stream, so therefore it helps the town as a whole. I mean, you could look at it that way, you know. So I mean, I think, and this particular time, I don't see that there's a reason to have caps. But I would be interested in learning, hearing more from Dr. Martis about the information he's going to share with the committee. And I think, you know, like anything, you know, if a million dollars came our way, then, you know, and we needed to look at that more closely, then I think, you know, we would do that. So, you know, at this particular time, I don't see the need for it, but there might be down the road, I don't know. I mean, again, situations may change, but, I'm sorry.
If someone puts it in their will that they would request a million dollars, and I think I'd be hard-pressed to say no to it. So I just, you know, you never know where or when it's going to come. And it's not, you know, looking to gift us in the face. But it's a matter of, this is what this person had intended. I mean, for anybody who's got a kid in college, why do we start getting the phone calls when they're seniors asking, "How much are you going to give?" I said, "I've given for four years." They want to know, you know, how much we give to the foundation, and this and that. So I mean, it's not, I mean, this is very open, very sincere. We're not trying to hide anything. And it does, I think it does encourage somebody else to say, gee, you know, maybe I'd like to do something too. And I, this is to create a very positive environment within the community. And I think people are jumping on board, they're getting excited about the foundation, about the fundraiser, about everything that we're doing. And this just, I don't know.
One of the things, Martha, that I hope this will continue to evolve to, but, you know, people give millions and millions and millions of dollars to their colleges, as you've just discussed. And you look at how much people give to, let's say, their public school system. They kind of don't think about a gift to the public school system. We've not made it very public, our needs. And, for instance, in some of the colleges and universities today, or United Way, or the American Cancer Society, you can make a bequest to them whereby you get the benefit in your lifetime. And then after you're dead, then that goes to the charitable foundation. So you can make a gift today, you can get tax benefits today, but you get the use of some of those funds for what you need. So as we start to explore some of these things, we may start to find that there are lots of people in the community of Foxborough who maybe have not been as aware. And so, as a school committee, one of the things we talked about is the need for communication, the need for information. I've asked, Chris, we're going to talk tonight about the five-year plan. When you look at the five-year plan, it always has windows and air conditioning and heating and all the infrastructure stuff. You don't see band instruments that we funded last year. You don't see some of the things that Kate's talked about from an athletic standpoint. So I said to Chris, "I'd like to see a five-year plan by the athletic director, by the head of music, by the head of art, by the head of all the different groups within the school. What are their five-year needs?" Now, they're not looking at a million dollars for this, or even $100,000 in some cases. But take the tennis, and I'll just, again, I'll make it up, but let's say that the, or take golf. The golf team has a need of $5,000 over the next couple of years for legitimate kinds of things. There could be someone in this community who is a very avid golfer, who says, "Let's get together and help get, raise that money for that golf." We have booster programs in some of our bigger sports. We have a booster program in the music program, but that doesn't cover all of the different aspects. And so I've asked Chris to work with some of our department heads to come up with a supplemental five-year plan that isn't infrastructure, but it's the kinds of things that would make a huge difference to sports, to music, to art, to drama, to science, et cetera. You know, maybe it's that extra pottery wheel that Jerry Roy could really use, but he figured, oh, well, you know, I'm just going to be low on the totem pole. If we don't understand those needs, then how do we begin to advocate for those folks? And I think that by having that information, we have an opportunity to share with the public what the real needs are outside of what we can fund on a day-to-day basis. And with the generosity that we have seen over the last few years within Foxborough, we may end up raising some additional money that will make the art program even better, or the sports programs even better, or the drama program even better, the foreign language, whatever it might be. So Chris has agreed to work with the department heads and come back with a supplemental five-year plan that wouldn't go to capital, so to speak. It would really be for us to start talking about, and making sure we have our eye on. So as an example, we're not waiting 40 years to buy uniforms for someone. We're not waiting until the uniforms are all torn for the basketball team, or whatever it might be. That we're focusing every year, what are the needs of those various groups within the schools? And in some cases, it could be very, very nominal, and yet make a big difference on that particular program. So Chris is going to put that together over the next, you know, month or two months and come back to us. And we'll spend some time in an evening with some of those folks here to talk to us about those needs.
I think that's one of the things that we've probably done last year and this year, in changing the budget presentation. We've had people come in and tell us exactly what they need to run a top-notch school. That doesn't mean you're going to get it, but it makes the community and the taxpayers understand that this is what we need, this is what we can afford. And I think that makes a difference, and that does allow people to maybe step up to the plate. You know, what's ironic about giving a college a huge endowment, they only had them for four years, we've had them for 12. So, you know, without this foundation, they wouldn't have gotten to that college. But we kind of, you know, people kind of forget about this. But I think sometimes when you have kids in the system and you personally see what they do without, then there's a little bit more of a, you know, a human side as to what you do or do not want to do. But I think probably the fact that we've changed things around and made people more aware of what you need versus what you can have, it's two different things. So I think, you know, public awareness has been a very plus, a big plus for us, making people understand the difference between, you know, what we've got and what we need. So it's out there.
Katie?
I'd like to also weigh in, because I think it's important that, and congratulate you, Larry, for having a very timely discussion on caps. Very simply put, none of us will ever get elected if we put a cap and say no to somebody giving us money. Nor should we be if we put a cap. So that's, I agree with Katie and Martha, and I'm sure Bev feels very strongly. But it's good that we get it on the record. I think perhaps it's also an issue of communication. One of the things we'll do tonight- One of the things we'll do tonight, you know, we have policies, and we've revised policies, and it talks about gift-giving. Martha mentioned scholarships, we're very clear on what the process is, and what we would need to do, what are the parameters, we're very clear on how we solicit money, and we don't allow other people to solicit, we have that. So maybe we need to, perhaps the Foxborough Reporter and I agree, I was taken aback by the level of criticism, because, was anyone contacted for input? Because perhaps we could have communicated that we did have policies. The bottom line is, it wasn't done in a vacuum. Every dollar or penny that's donated comes before us, and we're the ultimate decision-makers. And I think, in my experience, Martha, you've been here the longest, but in my five years, we've never said no to any money. Nor should we. Nor should we. What I'd also, you know, as we move on, and I think, again, you, Larry, and Martha should be congratulated, looking long-term, even if it takes a year or two to get the foundation up and running, that is a great way, as you said, Katie, for an additional revenue stream. I'd like to maybe, as part of the foundation, just keep in mind the concept of matching gifts. I know we've talked about them in the past, the issue was because we were a nonprofit, I mean, we have many people, parents still come up to, their employer wants to support, so if they give to Foxborough Public Schools, the employer will match that, and they like to be able to say, "Okay, I'd like to donate 100, or maybe 100, or whatever that number is, and my company up to a certain limit is going to match that." So perhaps that could also be looked into under the foundation. And, you know what, we're going to be updating policies if, as this foundation moves forward. I think the community needs to know that we have the talent on board here to take a look, and if we need to have certain requirements or fail stops put in, I don't foresee that it would be a cap, but, you know, we've gotten pretty good at revising policies, so I'm sure that we'll be doing the right thing in the right way.
Chris, other communities, what are they doing relative to?
Sure, well, the fact that, I think we have the right process in place, which starts with whether the committee has the veto power on this if they need it, if there's something that comes before you that you just don't feel comfortable. Some districts have had situations, usually during difficult budget times, when someone would come forward and say, "I'd really like another first-grade teacher at this school." And, you know, Larry, you were very clear, the gift that you gave had nothing to do with your family, most of the time it does have to do with a family interest, and "I'd like to reduce class size in this particular area." And school districts have said, "No, we can't accept your money just for that, so in terms of giving, I'll pay the teacher's salary." And so that's been, that's been an area. And even a little bit broader, when cuts have taken place in programs, people have come back and said, "I'd like to restore just this part of the program." And I think what this committee, and, you know, what we would be working on is, how does that fit in with our goals? How does it fit in with what we're trying to do to move forward? And just having this particular program for just the elementary level, when we've cut it out, and there's no connection to the middle school or the high school, excuse me, probably wouldn't make any sense. So there may be times, because in other communities, that's been faced over the years, where people have said, "I will only give you this if you put it here." And so, you obviously wrestle with issues of equity and fairness, so there may be opportunities. Now, again, by putting all of the information together about what the needs are, then someone might come forward and say, "You know, I really am interested in this program, you haven't cut it back, but I know you have needs here, and I am interested in this." But it's always your discretion as a school committee to decide where you decide to put that money, and whether you can, whether you accept it in that way, or whether you negotiate it and accept it in a much broader way. And finally, I think the best area for this is to encourage people to donate to an educational foundation, because then there's more process put in place where you'll have a defined set of areas where you can spend that money. I know I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about this earlier, that I sat on the Eastern Foundation Board for a few years, and that started out as just technology, just buying hardware and software for the school system. That's how they started. And then they branched out to, which many foundations do, and that is teacher mini-grants, where teachers come up with innovative ideas about things that they'd like to try in their classrooms. And that's been popular, I think, with a number of foundations across the state. So when this, as this foundation develops, putting those kinds of parameters, there's often a subcommittee, I sat on the teacher mini-grant subcommittee for a couple of years, that listen to that, and then they make decisions about which ones they'll fund, and which ones they're not able to fund. So there's some process that needs to be put in place from the foundation's side to be able to say, "This is really where the money will be spent, and how it will be spent to benefit all." But us putting all of that information together over the next few months, articulating what our needs are, will give the public an opportunity to say, you know, "This is an area that I'm interested in." So, there have been, there have been issues, I've talked to a number of colleagues over the last few months, there have been some issues in some communities about, just around the specificity and the inequity that that would create from one school to another, or from one program to another, and that's the only thing we really have to be careful about. But as I've always said, it's not a bad problem to deal with.
Any other comments from committee members on that topic? All right, we'll move on to the bid award number 2,008-9, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Chairman, the Foxborough Public Schools conducted a bid, in accordance with Chapter 30B, the statute that governs purchasing by municipalities. We asked for pricing for 120 band uniforms and six drum major uniforms. We only received one bid. Bid response was reviewed by Mr. Massey, as well as business office staff. The average uniform price came in at $417.53 per uniform. I'd recommend the school committee vote toward the bid to stand-by uniform in the amount of $52,608. In addition, I'd also like to make note that we anticipate purchasing an additional 100 insulated raincoats at an estimated cost of 70, I'm sorry, at an estimated cost of $7,000, somewhere between $65 and $70 each. This would bring the total expenditure for uniforms and raincoats to $59,608, which would bring us in the vicinity of $2,500 as an outstanding balance in the account from the two gifts.
There's a motion to accept it by Martha? Is there a second? Second by Kate, discussion?
Can you just give me that figure again, the total figure? 59?
608.
$52,608 for the uniforms.
Oh, 50, yeah.
And then an additional estimated expense of $7,000 for 100 raincoats, insulated raincoats.
Okay, so grand total, 59?
59, 608.
Okay.
Paul, you just may want to explain the kind of raincoat side, where there's really not a specific vendor there, or a set of vendors, it seems to be a much more open process, I'm talking to Mr. Massey.
The uniform itself is a custom-made uniform. The raincoats are more of a generic and available from multiple suppliers. So the original decision was, in fact, I don't think the Standbury Uniform actually makes this raincoat. So the discussion with Mr. Massey was that we would bid the uniform, which is a specialized uniform, and the generic raincoat would be, we'd secure quotes, also in accordance with 30B. For the 100 insulated rain jackets, he felt there were about five suppliers out there that could provide the raincoat.
And Paul, you're saying that we would leave the $2,500 in the account as a replacement account, where we could add if we wanted to, as a committee, or we could approve, Mr. Massey could budget $1,000 or $2,000 every year to its uniform, so that when those need to be replaced, there's money put aside?
I'm not sure I followed.
Okay. The money that's left will stay in a uniform replacement account?
Yes.
And then going forward, so that he doesn't have to come forward at some point 15, 20 years down the road and ask for $100,000 for uniforms, could we put away a couple of thousand dollars every year to build this uniform replacement account? Much like we do with athletics, where we replace them, when you're replacing, you know, 20 uniforms for basketball, it's not that expensive at one point, when you're replacing 100 band uniforms, it's very expensive at one point. So is there a way that we can build an account up over time, so that we don't get into this situation 20 years down the road?
I don't believe we could legally allocate town-appropriated funds, but they might be a way to allocate some revolving account funds to do that type of a thing.
I mean, all I'm saying is, I'd hate to get 20 years down the road and have them come back at some point, because they need new uniforms. Athletics, we put money in so that they get their new uniforms on a regular basis, so I guess, I'd just like us to think through, so we don't leave a school committee 20 years from today dealing with the same issue.
I think during budget time, what we could do is come to the committee, in the normal course of budget, and say that we need to buy five uniforms this year, based on whatever fact, changes of sizes or...
Well, the problem with that, though, is that that's what they've been doing for the last 20 years, but then the style is old. So either you replace all the uniforms at one time for a new style, or you just keep replacing the old style. So if they get to a point 20 years down the road where this style is no longer appropriate, and they want to get a new one, then you really have to, so I'm just looking for your thoughts on how we avoid the problem 20 years down the road.
I guess I'd like to think about it, and then, and see what we could come up with, with some sources of funds, if we would be able to do that, because that would make sense.
So there's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor accepting the bid? Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the CIP request. Mr. Jackson?
Do you have any thought, Paul? We have reformatted and actually worked on this, I want to thank Paul, Larry Hadley and others, as we were looking at this. So what was in your package originally that we sent, we've been just looking at differences in reformatting. So I just want to walk through the reformatting, and then Paul can talk specifics about what it looks like. We have, again, a five-year capital improvement plan request that we'll be submitting to the town. The FY09 request, I think, is what we've done, is we've taken it into two major categories, recurring costs, or recurring items, and those are computers and software upgrades. I think this committee has been very proactive recently in looking at an issue that is affecting many, many school districts across the state, and that is the inability to make sure that you have an ongoing technology replacement plan, because it's very easy to let this go for a couple of years, given the cost, and to find out that you have, much of your technology is breaking down, and you have very little left after a period of time. So that's in there. Obviously, school buses is not something that is a surprise to anyone in this community, and copy machines, we have been putting together an ongoing program for that. And then, just to give examples for next year of non-recurring, as we mentioned twice now, and we're getting some more information, and I'll be sharing at the next school committee meeting with the committee and the community about the mass school building assistance feasibility study for Foxborough High School. And we put the number in that they, the number that they gave us, the highest number that they gave us, just to be prudent about it, actually, and we know that we're going to be reimbursed at some level, and we do not yet know the reimbursement level. So we're learning more about that, and hopefully we'll have some more data as we move along over the next month or so. But $250,000, that's a one-time-only cost to do the feasibility study here at Foxborough High School. Continuing with floor tile replacement, going from the Igoe School this past summer to the Taylor School, we believe that's an important area. I know Craig is here to talk, and Michael and Larry are both here to talk about some locker renovation that we've been discussing at the Igoe School that houses locker space for some of our high school programs, and he's broken that out in a couple of different ways. If it's phased over three years, it actually costs more than if it's done in one year. So that's an area for discussion. And then continuing the paving and curbing here at the high school, we certainly saw the benefit of that this past summer, going into the new school year in September. And then, we've done some work already over by the tennis courts, and some paving that we just finished recently, and to pave those tennis courts and to do some fencing there is something that's long overdue, and is really becoming critical. So, we've really reformatted this, we hope it's easier to understand and clearer to see, and then we just move forward in the rest of the four years. We have put in, under non-recurring, that you'll see on that first page, for FY10, the cost of the renovation project, and figuring that we should put this in, just so that people see it. We will know more over the next few months, one of the reasons we put it in for FY10, we'll know over the next few months what the timeline, timetable will be for that renovation project.
Before you turn that page, Chris, when we talked to the state, we also talked about the Borough and the Taylor School, and that we have needs there with windows, and heating, and roof, and other kinds of things. And so, we've put a placeholder in here, in fiscal 10, because we intend to put a proposal together for the state, much like we do with the high school. And so, at the bottom of this first page, it says Taylor School feasibility study, again, that as a placeholder, we would hope that the state, for the same rationale they used at the high school, that if you take very good care of your buildings, infrastructure eventually is going to wear out. From the state's standpoint, putting money into infrastructure like windows, heating, air conditioning, those kinds of things, they extend the building life dramatically. It's a very smart investment on their part. So you'll see that we broke out the high school separately, we intend, and we share some of the things with you on both Taylor and Borough, the infrastructure needs we have at those two schools, and we are committed to go to the state and put the same kind of a package together as we did with the high school, in hopes that we could get some state funding to cover some renovations in those 40-year-old buildings as well. The windows and the heating systems would be a very significant enhancement to those, as well as one of the schools need a new roof as well. So, we think that if the high school project is as successful as we think it's going to be, it'll give us a good opportunity to work with the state on our other two buildings that are in need of work as well.
Paul, I don't know if you want to comment further. No, no, sir.
Questions from the committee?
I think when you look at the tennis court, I think we're almost at a point, I know last year when we went out there and looked at it, if we don't do something to fix the tennis courts, I think we might find that the league might come in and say that we're not able to use those tennis courts, and therefore, where else are we going to play? So I think that's something that we really, when you look at the cracks out there, it's getting to the point where somebody's going to say, "You can't play here." So it's something that has to be...
One of the things, Martha, that the team did, the team being Paul, and Chris, and Mike, and some of the folks out there, is they put fiscal '09 in order of where they ranked them. So for instance, and we can maybe talk for a few minutes about the locker renovation, maybe, guys, if you want to come up to the table, because they've ranked that higher than both the paving and curbing at the high school and the tennis court, so maybe you want to hear from them, kind of what their thoughts are, they've brought a demonstration here for you, and they can explain to you why that is so important to them.
Well, first, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to come forward with this proposal. I think one of the things, on the heels of my last meeting here with you, was talking about our budget, and one of the things I've tried to do this year is just evaluate our facilities as best I can, get as informed as I can about them. I, you know, certainly agree that the tennis court needs to be addressed, but part of that is also just looking at the current climate of things, and with the meeting we had even before the budget proposal with MRSA, and the health issue with that, and what we're doing to be proactive, the locker room was something that we thought kind of vaulted it a little bit ahead of that. Now, I certainly think we need to address both, but if I were to pick one, I would obviously go with that, the one that would, you know, put us in a better, more proactive position with that whole MRSA virus that's, you know, we've all read and seen so much about in the last six, eight months.
Bacteria.
Back, right.
To your point.
The, you know, the issue that, what we've done today is...
It's just a bad thing. Whatever it is, it's bad.
Certainly new ground for me, and, yeah, I'm learning a lot about it in the last month, last few months, even the last couple of weeks. But what we try to do is, you know, the issue with our locker room, the lockers that you see over here now are the ones that we have, the blue ones. The issues are that, you know, the kids, you know, they might be able to fit their equipment in there, stuff it in there, but they can't hang it in there, it can't dry, it's on the floor because they can't keep it in there, and so you have two-fold issues, you know, in terms of cleaning the floor, it becomes difficult, I'm sure Mike can attest to this, keeping stuff off the floor just makes it easier to get at it and clean it as a whole. The locker that you see on your right allows you to keep the stuff off the floor, it can hang and dry in an open-air locker, it's vented, there's a... vented, there's a, there's a little foot locker on the bottom that they can lock their valuables in, where some of the locks on the, the current lockers we have are, are broken off. It also gives them a chance to sit down and, and create more space, so you don't have benches and stools and everything else. Again, having stuff on the floor that, it just makes it more difficult to clean and keep sanitary. It, that, the one you see there has got all the bells and whistles, you know, they gave me a, a sample. Contrary to, to the grief I've been hearing about, it won't be red if we did get it.
We're not thinking red.
It would be, it would be this color.
How old are they?
I caught some ribbon today about that, but it would be navy blue. And you can see, I mean, we, we went out today, all of our equipment is up being reconditioned, but we grabbed some samples just to hang up there, so you get an idea of how it would look. And I cer, I certainly would like to think that we could do it for everything, obviously. I don't want people thinking we're just prioritizing one locker room, but we certainly need to start somewhere. And we thought that that was, there's certain sports that are more at risk than others. So we thought that was a good place to start. Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, although the locker room, if anyone who's been in there is in dire need of, of a facelift.
Now, again, just, we're talking about the IGO as well as the, the football will be at the IGO, right?
Right.
So the plan this year is really to take care of the locker room at the IGO.
Right.
It's three separate locker rooms.
Right.
And, and there's other benefits to it. I mean, you, right now, we have a football team as one men's room, and for over 100 athletes. The other locker room was, was used for soccer, which had one men's room, so it was split. This way, we would open that whole area up, we'd have two men's rooms for the, for the kids, give them one functioning shower, and we'd also be able to take out some, some, like a smaller shower facility that's not really functioning right now, just create more space. So there's, there's more at play than just, you know, than just that.
A question I have, are those the original lockers when the IGO was renovated, or when that was, IGO was the high school?
I asked around.
Was it longer than 40 years old?
I think they're originals.
Oh, those, yeah, those are much older than four years old.
Oh, that's what I, that's what I, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Now, when, when that was rehabbed, I know they do new lockers purchased.
So what, 60, 70 years old? Safe guess. So right now, I'm just curious, where do they put the?
I put my name in there, wait.
Where do they put the shoulder pads? On, on the floor, usually?
So though, I didn't really, the shoulder pads are on the floor?
They usually, because they can't fit them in the locker.
So.
Some are up on top. I mean, whoever gets there first gets to put them on top, and everyone else puts them.
So the wear and tear are also on our equipment?
Well, part of the problem for us to go in and clean, just, if you've seen them come in off the field and walk in, there is, there is mud and dirt everywhere. I mean, they just carry it in on their cleats. And for us to clean that locker room now, we have to go around and pick everything up, off the floor, put it, sweep it, wash it, and then put everything back down again.
And it's not good for you to be handling them.
No.
If there's something on it, how are you going to know? You know, so it's, it's a huge issue.
And the cost savings, if we do it separately, then it's going to cost us in addition $20,000?
Right.
Okay. So there's a real incentive for us to do it, do it as well as we can, and to do it completely for, for that, for that cost savings, for $22,000 of savings.
Right. You know, with the freight and everything else that's involved, it, it jumps up significantly. I mean, that's a li, it's, there's a lifetime guarantee to it. You can move it. I mean, if we ever did something down the road, you know, this, there, we could move them or, you know, relocate them, we could do that. It's not like it's bolted down, it's heavy enough to, you know, be freestanding. So there's a lot of pluses to it.
So they'll remove the benches that are in there currently?
Right.
Because they're also a hazard.
Right, we get all that out.
Have extra space for some more locker room.
We talked about designing, Mike and Craig and Paul have been involved on how do you design those spaces, redesign those spaces. Mentioned that middle old shower area there that just hasn't functioned.
Right. It's right in the middle of the room, you know, and, and it, you know, what they use it for now is just storage, and we could just take it out with some small demo. And I know I'm speaking for Mike here, but you could, you could put back-to-back lockers right in the center of the, of that area, you know, to get 150 lockers in there, it wouldn't be hard, you know, if you designed it right. We had somebody come in, take measurements, and actually do mockups of each room, and broke down, you know, how it would look for each room, the three of them. It also gives you, as I said before, you know, you have a football staff with nine assistant coaches to really monitor that group. Now you've got one program over there versus two, and, you know, I know, like I said before, the traffic issues that go with, with IGO, you know, you hope that you have, you know, our longest-tenured, most decorated coach. I know I've said that before too, but, you know, it's true, to keep an eye on, on things there.
Other questions on the CIP plan?
I just have, only because now we're changing the format, and I like the new format, but I want to make sure I understand it. So have these been, we would always prioritize our CIP in the order in which, so the first ones that are listed first, because usually there's only so much money in the pot. So when we go, when Larry, you and Bev go to the, the CIP meeting, it, we don't, at least the last couple of years, make it through the list. So I just want to understand, this is a prioritized list, correct?
Yes.
So we would do, in other words, we would do computers before we would do anything else, the feasibility study or anything else, because that's how the list reads, correct?
The way it was set up was that there were certain recurring things every year. So if you look at it, it's $400,000 to $500,000 a year for capital, for buses, for copiers, and for new computers. Now, that wasn't necessarily ranked. What was ranked was the non-recurring items in order of priority. We do have to have buses every year, so that has to come first. With that, we do 3 million impressions a year, so the copiers have to come. If we were to decide at some point that something was more important than computers, we could do that. But the idea was, what are the same things that come up every single year, list that as, as reoccurring, and then what are the one-time kinds of things listed in that in order of priority under non-recurring?
But my question, thank you for the explanation, but when you go to the committee, are they going to say that, because it's first, that, that the reoccurring expenses are our number one priority? Because they may not fund it. For instance, they're, we're always questioned over the copiers. It's absolutely the right thing to do, but how many times has, has it been said that, you know, everything gets approved, but we're not going to get our cap, copiers? So the, the need tends to build up. But I, I want to be clear, are, is this, you're saying, Larry, that reoccurring is, because it hap, it's needed and it's there?
It's forgiven every year.
What I'm also saying, though, Kate, is that what we've done in the past, for instance, with copiers, is when, when the CIP committee looks at this and evaluates it, and determines how much money they have and what they're going to approve or not approve, then I would expect Chris to come back to the committee, since he's one of the voting members of that committee, to say, here's what was funded, here's what was not funded. Let's say, for instance, that they decided they weren't going to fund the copiers. Well, we know we need to have copiers, so then we, as a school committee, have to talk about where, what's the revenue source going to be for the copiers. Maybe it's out of revolving account, maybe it's out of whatever. The same thing with, if, for instance, the locker renovation project was not approved, I would expect that we'd come back here, we'd talk about how else might we raise the revenue to cover that. So, you know, we never get everything that's on our list, although in the two years that I've been on the committee, we've done, I think, just about everything we wanted. They've been very good to us, we've given money back, we've gotten that money back in our capital. There's not going to be enough capital this year, I don't think, to give us $1,162,310. So there'll have to be, you know, there'll probably be a healthy discussion around paving and curbing. And while that's important, is it necessary? There'll be probably a healthy discussion around, you know, tennis courts. Can it go one more year? Could it not go one more year? What's the ramification? If all the tennis matches were away instead of home, what's the extra cost in busing? So, you know, the argument will be made for, for each of these, and whatever doesn't get funded in '09, I would expect to put on the agenda here for this committee to discuss. And if we think something is really important to fund, and the town didn't have the money, then we have, for instance, you know, we've got a number of building rental accounts and other accounts that we could look at if we thought something was that important. And, and part of that would be the negotiations we would do with the town on how we might use some of that revolving accounts for one-time items.
So Larry, though, to get to Kate's question then, the non-reoccurring are in priority?
That's what I was told.
But in essence, everything is really kind of negotiable when you, when you, when the meeting is held for the CIP?
That's correct. They can, they can pick and choose from what they want. I just thought it was easier to look at the reoccurring things every year and be able to see, it's 380, it's 474, it's 490, it's 498, it's roughly around $500,000. So when we start thinking five-year capital planning and five-year budgets, we ought to be thinking. For instance, there are, there are some communities that would take computers and say, that's got to be built into your operating budget, because you know you're going to buy 250 of those a year. So somehow, you've got to work that. So all I'm saying is, I wanted us to look at, when we look at our five-year budget, and we're going to propose that to you shortly, that we, we look at both capital and we look at operating together, so that you can see what are those reoccurring things, and then what are those unique one-time events, like paving, or like tennis courts, or like the locker renovation, that you can choose to do this year or next year. But i, i, if, you can't decide not to hire a bu, not to buy a bus if you need to bust the, the kids. And, and if the copiers fail, we have a problem. So that's why we, we did, we did it separately. If the committee would like to break it out in the other way, and that's fine too. I just thought it'd be easy to see reoccurring.
No, I think it's, I think it's.
We're just trying to understand the new format.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's.
And how will the CIP committee, and I know you'll do a wonderful job explaining to them, but I, when I look at the list, because they've always gone by, you know, priority, and, and very specifically, are we saying, and I know you just said no, but let me explain. When you look at it, based on past practice, it looks to me like reoccurring would outweigh the non, non-reoccurring. But we didn't necessarily prioritize that. We're now saying that no matter what, to be fiscally responsible, maybe this is part of our presentation, that we want to tell you exactly what will be reoccurring every year, and it's a new format change, so that this must be the, the first thing that we look at. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, yes. And, and then, I think, just as another example on this, and the first one listed under the non-reoccurring, the MSBA feasibility study, that's important to move the process along, or at least we think it is now. If we hear something different from the state, we could, you know, we could change that. But right now, that, to get this program moving, we really need that. I mean, and that's, that's a timely, a timely decision. At the, at the same time, the town also knows that 50%, and I'm going to be conservative on this from now on, until I hear a different number, 50% will be reimbursed. So the town's cost of this won't be $250,000.
There'll be a revenue source of $125,000.
But when, when Paul talked to Randy Scollins, they decided you'd have to put the, the full number in. So there'll be, you know, so I think that's also some of the discussion and negotiation that I hope that, you know, as a member of that committee that I have.
But would they see the feasibility study as less important than the buses, because of the way it's formatted? We don't see it that way, but I just.
I think that's, that's.
I think that's going to be part of the presentation, sure.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And I, and I need it to push, because we've always done it. I want to be absolutely clear that it doesn't come back.
That's a very good question.
And to be very fair to the committee, remember, Mr. Jackson just got back from his vacation this morning at 8:00, and this format change just happened today. And so we're still kind of trying to work through what the priorities would be. I set up a format, but I asked them to prioritize the items, so they came up with, with how they wanted the list. We haven't even begun to think of what, how we might present it to the, to the CIP until after the committee had, you know, you might, you might, someone might say, no, I think paving and curbing is not important at all, move it to 10, or move it, whatever. So we haven't even begun to think of how that presentation will go to CIP. And the date of that, Paul, is when?
March 1st.
March 1st.
Just Saturday morning, and it's either 8:00 or 8:30. But we have to submit the list, the end of this week.
Correct.
But in the past, I believe, we've given a list, and then the committee has actually gone in and prioritized the list as to what the committee, this was our best guess in terms of what, how it should be looked at, but we really didn't look at and make a decision whether or not that MSBA feasibility study should be number one, or it should be number four.
But it's number one under non-recurring?
Right. And I'll, I didn't, I said I was all set when you asked if I wanted to make any comments. The computers, we need to purchase between two and 250 computers a year in order to keep the computer fleet at six years or less in terms of age. The buses, a couple of years ago, I had said we have to purchase, and statistically, it's just under three, but we have to purchase three buses a year to keep the bus fleet at nine years or less. We're buying two this year, last year, I think it was two. The, when we redid the bus routes two years ago, we had reduced the bus fleet from 16 regular routes to 15. We took a look at it, and we didn't feel we needed three buses. Copiers, we're doing six-plus million impressions a year. The expectation is that if we get 3 million impressions out of a copy machine, we're doing well, which really necessitates needing to replace two a year. And that's being optimistic that we actually get 3 million copies out of them. And those are the reoccurring things.
I like this format. I think this is, this is very clear.
Well, what's good, too, is when you look at what we're probably going to be requesting for next year, it makes the feasibility study very important, because you're charging a lot of money for, for the high school.
And the town manager, the town finance director, and the chairman of the board of selectmen know very clearly how important it is for that feasibility study, and have committed their support for the project. So I think that the, the, while it says 250, it's, it, there's going to be a funding source of capital of 125, and, and state reimbursement of 125, probably, or something like that. So, you know, it's up to us to, to make the case for '09, but we still don't even know yet what the capital is going to look like, because until the, the state budget is more firmed up, as we said at our last meeting, the governor's budget is some 500,000 or 600,000 higher than Randy's latest numbers. That makes a huge difference. And the legislature could increase that or decrease that. So depending on what they do will be important. And then, even when that's finalized, depending on how much of a compromise we're willing to make on operating on both sides, that would either free up or take away from the capital as well. And just so that you know, on the town side, things like, we have a number of dams in town that we're under orders to repair. And so there are some, some, some state mandated kinds of things like that. There's the renovation at the town hall, and then they have things like fire trucks and dump trucks and other things that are re, reoccurring as well. So there's still a lot that's going to have to go into trying to finalize how much we have to spend for capital, and then how that's going to get allocated. And we're still a couple of weeks away from that, probably.
Just a couple of questions, if I may. Michael Leary, you're always straightening me out. I want to, I absolutely love the way you prioritize. I just want to come to know, because I'm, I know that in the strategic plan we had for '09, like the Taylor School Playground, we had things, I think Borough's coming up for, well, that was 2011. But I see a different prioritizing. I like the fact that we're going to do feasibility studies. If you put the Taylor feasibility study before the Borough, does that mean, that means we're saying that the Taylor needs to, that Taylor needs to be done before the Borough? And are we going to be okay? Will the Borough roof make it? Because that's the one thing I always worry about, along with the others.
Well, we'd put in, see, there's different categories that we can request money from the state, so we have to fall into one of those categories. So we'd put in the Borough roof as its own entity for the most part, and then we'd take windows, and then take heating system and so on, on both. I think the roof would be a high priority, as far as we're concerned, at the Borough. And then after that, it'd be windows, heating systems, and so on.
One of the.
Okay, but will we make it? Because now it's been, if I read this correctly, we're, it's the right thing to do, but we're pushing it out. So will we, will we make it?
We'll make, when we did, we spent, oh, four years ago, three years, four, four years ago, we spent about $38,000 redoing seams and flashings in that building. So the membrane, we had the manufacturer come out, I had the building committee come out with me and look at it. Membrane was, was still pretty solid. Where the problems arise on, on EPDM roofs are the flashings and the seams. So we, we spent about $38,000 and redid all the seams and the flashing. That extended the light, life of the roof at least five years. You know, so we, we've got, we've got a couple more years, we should be okay on it.
But can we make it to, to FY13?
One of the other things we're going to do, Kate, is we're going to approach the state and ask them, if you take the Borough and the Taylor together, it adds up to about $2 million, windows, air conditioning, heating, et cetera. This, this program of the state is brand new, but what we're going to do is we're going to approach them and say, can we, can we look at the two schools as one project, as opposed to two separate projects, and do them together? It's $2 million. They would give us the 60%, 65%, we'd have to fund the difference. And allow us to do both of those. I think there'd be an advantage of doing them together. But since we don't know that from the state yet, we've separated them. They chose to put one first, the other one second. The funding from the town standpoint is really only focusing on '09 for now. We have a chance as we go through fiscal '09 and we meet with the state, understand more about the state rules, and we look at the condition of Taylor versus the condition of Borough. We have plenty of opportunity to change that around and move Taylor ahead of Borough. Or if the state's willing, to try to put them both together so that we can get them both done approximately around the same timeframe, which would be a real advantage for us. And if you even combine, it's a small $2 million project for the state. But it would extend the lives of those two buildings dramatically. And the state is very interested in saving on heating costs and energy costs. And the kinds of things that are suggested for both of those buildings are the kinds of things that the governor and the state have said they really want to get on board with doing. So we think that there may be some possibility of trying to piggyback the two schools together, and we're going to try that.
I'm glad to hear that. Now, let me just ask, the hot water tank at the high school, obviously, then we're going to wait for the high school, so that rolls, that for the renovation.
It would be part of this study, correct.
The Taylor School Playground.
And the reason being, we would be reimbursed by the state.
Absolutely, I got that. I just want to make, I want to make sure, because if someone asks me, I need to be able to understand it and articulate it. So the Taylor School Playground, that's no longer on the list?
That's done. That's complete.
Well, we moved that up. Aren't we, don't we still have the cost of ripping out the old one that's on the hill?
Yes, outback.
Where is that, does that going to be out of the operating budget and not out of capital?
Yeah, that would be, we'd do that out of operating.
Okay, so that's not a, that's not a big, that's not a big ticket item. So the, for instance, now the floor tiles at Taylor, that's, that is, based on your prioritized list, as important as the lockers are, we're saying if we don't get everything, that the floor tile would precede the lockers.
We should. I mean, we've abated all of the elementaries up until now and replaced them with new tile. The remainder of the Taylor, I think, should come first. I mean, that's.
It's so hard. That's why I wanted to ask the question.
My heart is with the football team, but I still have, you know, a building to maintain.
My heart's with both of them. How do you balance that? And I think that's, those are the important questions, right, Mike? I mean, you put that ahead of the.
But the ask, Kate, says if we don't get the funding, we'll come back and discuss it as a committee.
Greg wouldn't, but I did. But, you know, it's just, where the borough's done and the IGO are completely done, fairness, we should complete the Taylor.
Anything else, Kate? Katie, any other comments?
No, just that I think this is fluid. It's going to change, you know, there, so I think that we need to be aware of that as we're looking at it. You may come back in a week in your next meeting and say something has changed on this, so.
Martha, anything else?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the CIP, a motion by Katie, second by Martha? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 4-0. Now, the next item on the agenda, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the revised policy manual. And since Martha has led the entire review process, I'm going to just turn this section of the meeting over to Martha.
I think everybody's aware that we've worked very hard during the past year to bring this about. We've had quite a few meetings on Friday nights that are open to the public for input and discussion. So I think we've met with that part of it. What I'd like to see us do is, there is, there are copies up there. There is a hold list that's in place. There are some policies that are missing because we're still waiting for input back from certain people. I don't have a problem with us doing the first reading and passing this policy book. Katie has a couple of things that she'd like us to review, and Kate might have something. But for the most part, I think this committee has done its part in fulfilling our obligation to review our policy manual. I think we've done a stellar job. When you look at what we had for a manual, which was about this thick, and what we have now with the help of Jim Hardy, I think we've done a stellar job at bringing this about in a very short period of time. We do need to keep a log of anybody, Wendy, who has this book because as we start filling in the holes, we have to be able to alert these people to bring in whatever they have in their possession so that we can make sure that they're inserted. I think it's going to be, this committee or any committee after us, their responsibility to review this policy book once a year, make sure it's up to date. One of the benefits of having MAS-C involved is they will alert us to the fact that things need to be changed because of state regulations or whatever. So I think that's a huge plus for us, not having to sit and read through things and try to figure out what needs to be revised because certainly the state's mandate will supersede anything we have on a local level. So it'll, it'll be a great way of us updating things that we're really not aware of. So Katie, you've had a couple of things that you wanted us to.
Yep, you can look at the revised sheets on file BAA, which is the evaluation of school committee operational procedures. At one of the previous school policy meetings, I was asked to align the objectives which were set. They're numbered 1 through 9, and I reformatted it 1 through 8. So if anybody has any questions or.
So if everybody will put that in their book, this will be the one that we'll use versus the one that's.
I aligned it with our school committee evaluation. But again, if anyone has questions or comments about it?
It's pretty clear.
Okay, and then the second one that I was asked to revise was CBI, which was the evaluation of the superintendent. And I just changed number four, just some words, nothing, to provide administrative and educational leadership for the Foxborough school system. And again, to align with the superintendent evaluation. The other question, actually, it wasn't put in, but I don't know, just put it out to the committee. If we want, we say the Foxborough School Committee will periodically develop. Do we want to state annually develop with the superintendent a set of performance objectives based on the needs of the school system? We did put it in.
We had, we had it, then we took it out. I'm for saying annually, but I'm going to let my colleague speak.
Because we did, just on the previous, for the evaluation of school committee operational procedures, we did say that the school committee, when the Foxborough School Committee has completed its annual self-evaluation. So if we want to be consistent.
I thought I recall Jim saying that he liked the word periodically. In the event a superintendent leaves, a new one starts, then you're going to develop new ones with him. And that gave us some flexibility, although he agreed that there should be an understanding, I think, that we should do it at least annually. But there could be people coming, people going. And so he didn't want us to put, you know, like annually in March or annually in April or whatever it might be, because it would change per person. And so I thought I recalled him saying he liked the word periodically. But from my viewpoint, I think it's our expectation. My expectation is, as Kate just said, we would do this annually.
Did he say the same thing about the other, the BAA regarding the school committee evaluation?
Well, we had so many meetings, it's hard to remember what exactly, but I remember a discussion around the word periodically.
You know, to say at least annually, see, I had a different take on the periodic. We might decide to, to, I mean, take a look any time. For instance, we might decide to take a look in access at that. But to say at least annually, it's just a marker. And to me, I think it lends clarity.
Chris, what are you comfortable with, either?
I'm comfortable with either, but I understand that point. And that's, you could say at least annually actually is probably clearer. Because then you could do it more if you wanted, but you would have to make sure you did it annually.
Okay, all right, so then put annually, check out the.
Which one, is that the last sentence?
CBI, the last paragraph.
First sentence?
First sentence.
Do you replace the word periodically with at least annually?
And do we, do we feel comfortable with the school committee evaluation the way it's written? Or do we want to change that to at least annually?
I would be consistent with that.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I would be consistent.
Well, it says, that first, I'm sorry, the second to last paragraph, the school has completed its annual self.
It says.
So what do you change?
Okay, all right.
It says.
Okay. Yeah, I know it said it, I just didn't know that we wanted to. Okay, that's fine.
Kate, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I know we're developing the hold list, so just for our notes, this should now come off the history, I think, unless anyone has problems with it. Jim put it in the December or last meeting.
I think we should just keep it in the front of our books, that we're aware that we have these on hold.
It is now, no, it is now completed. And I just want to say, I think Jack Ortholet, and I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the history.
Oh, the history, oh, I'm sorry.
The history is done. And again, our thanks to Jack Ortholet, I think it's, I think it's fine. The other, I just want to go back and check under wellness, which is our letter ADF. We like what, we like what MAS did, but we preferred our own, and I'm in favor of our own. But the only thing that was on the MAS policy is it talked about a wellness committee. And I missed it on the yellow copy, but we, it never specifies. And I thought, I believe we need to check with Jim Hardy, ADF.
It's almost at the very end of the A's, second to the last.
I thought the regulations from the state, actually, that was the one thing they commanded, that you have a wellness committee that met at least once a year. And I like our policy, I'm all for our policy, but I noticed that the wellness committee and how it would be, who's on it and who appoints it is not in this final version. So I think we need to just check with Jim Hardy if that's the case. And I think, you know, we probably want to state how this policy is going to be updated every year through the wellness or by recommendations from the wellness committee.
Did we talk about that under subcommittees, too, though, with Jim during that meeting? And how subcommittees are appointed and therefore, we could do that under another policy?
The only, but it states specifically in the, in the MAS-C policy about the need for the wellness committee. And we really didn't like their policy. We preferred our own, which I think is actually, has more things than what was legally mandated. But I think we need to check the mandate requirements of the wellness committee because we at one point said, yeah, we really do need, Jim Hardy and MAS is right. There's no sense in having a policy that may meet the letter of the law if you don't meet the real intent, which is to keep looking at it and updating it and having those people together and evaluating what this policy is.
So you want to put that, Wendy, put it to the hold and ask?
Okay.
Jim, about that one? What else?
I've got to look it up, BED, I write this all down. It's the public participating at school committee meetings. There's just one, BED, BE, BEDH.
A lot of BEV.
Okay. Okay, it's beautiful. My only question is item number three. When I read that, it says, "All questions posed to the Foxborough School Committee during the visitor's section must be presented before the start of the speaker's time allotment. Questions that cannot be answered during the meeting will be answered subsequent to the meeting in a timely manner." I don't know how we'd ever manage, I know why we said we wanted to do that. How are we going to manage that uniformly? So no one can come before us unless they actually put their question in writing to us ahead of time? Is that really what we want?
No.
No. All questions.
All questions posed, this is under public participation. All questions posed to the Foxborough School Committee during the visitor's section must be presented before the start of the speaker's time allotment.
Because I really have a think work with them because I referenced Mrs. Johnson.
I think we had said something, you know, and we changed it several times. Every effort will be made to answer questions, but if we, we will still get back in a timely manner. I think that's what our intent was.
I remember that part of the statement.
Yeah, I think this is the wrong thing to go down.
Yeah, no, this wasn't what we.
I think this is, wasn't that referring to people with written statements to give to us?
That's true.
Not questions.
It could be, but see, the way it's written, it's not clear now.
I think you're right, it's not.
I think it's in regards to written statements.
Yeah, but it's.
But that's in number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, true is covered, yeah.
No, there was, I thought, there was a discussion around when people ask questions, would it be helpful if we, if we, you know, to ask a question we don't know the answer to, if you gave it to us in advance, we could research it, maybe have an answer. And then we have an obligation to answer, and how soon do we want to answer? And we got into a discussion of an example of a letter that we received that we didn't respond to and that we should respond to. And what's, so we added the word timely after that, that we, we, obligation. So I recall it, as Kate said, that questions would be answered if at all possible, but if not at that meeting, as soon as practical thereafter.
Yeah, not presented before. So can we omit that first sentence?
Do we need three, or do we, however?
Or questions presented at a, during the visitor's section that cannot be answered during the meeting will be answered subsequent to the meeting in a timely manner?
That's what I would do, Kate. I would just take the middle part out.
Could you read that again so I can correct my book all?
Just cross out, must be presented before the start of the speaker's time allotment.
I don't know where that came from, actually.
And then continue to cross out questions that. And would read, all questions posed to the Foxborough School Committee during the visitor's section, leave that in rather. That cannot be answered during the meeting, will be answered subsequent to the meeting in a timely manner.
Wendy, you got that?
All questions posed to the Foxborough School Committee during the visitor's section that cannot be answered during the meeting will be answered subsequent to the meeting in a timely manner.
In a timely manner.
Okay.
That was, that was a good catch, Kate.
The only other question I had, oh my God, was a B, I'm so sorry, BDF.
I had jury duty one day, and that's when I sat, and that was people trying to figure out what I was doing. They were all having a good time.
We originally had moved at one point when it was quite to task force versus advisory, and then we changed it. I was the only one that really had an issue with the word advisory. In the final version, I'll mention it one more time, I personally have trouble with advisory committee as the title we're using because I think it's very confusing because of the significant nature of our advisory committee that we use as part of the town bylaws. So I really think we want the power and the opportunity to be able to set up any kind of committee or task force involving citizens and parents. And I think we should think of it in terms of a task force and not advisory so it doesn't confuse the public.
Yeah, but when you read down through this, number one refers to an advisory committee, number two does. And I think, I don't have a problem with the name.
Not a problem. I realize the majority does not have a problem with it, but I needed to say it one more time.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Because I think, because sometimes people view task force or something as a little bit different. I think because we say advisory committee so many times, I'd rather.
Well, it's not a subcommittee.
No, it doesn't say that it's a subcommittee.
If we want, and that's, because that's a different terminology. If the chairman or any of us want to have a citizen input, how do we, what do we call that committee? We need to use some kind of adjective to distinguish it from our committee and subcommittees. So it's just the word advisory.
Yeah, but a subcommittee is made up of us. An advisory committee is made up of someone out here. So I would rather we, you know, Larry would say, okay, we need a subcommittee for policies.
Right, that's us.
Okay, that's us. So an advisory committee is putting together citizens to come in and review things or.
Right, and that's what's confusing to me because in this town, the advisory committee is so important, that it's a very confusing term. And that's why I just, I felt, I wanted to say it one more time. I realize that the committee changed their mind and is comfortable with advisory, but I just want to bring it up one more time. It does state in that first.
It does state in that first paragraph, they talk about student advisory committees.
That's a different one, it's government.
Yeah, that's under student government, yeah.
Right, but I mean, they, we're labeling students, you know, as an advisory committee. Would it help if we said citizen advisory committees?
Citizen, it's a citizen advisory committee.
I mean, this way it takes away the question about, is that the finance committee? But it's...
Yeah, but sometimes you'll have an advisory committee that might have high school students on it. I mean, you don't, you want an advisory committee to take in everybody, not just a...
Not just citizens?
Not just citizens.
Aren't students still citizens? They are citizens. Citizens would work for me.
I mean, it distinguishes what you're concerned is, Katie. All right, citizens, citizen advisory committees?
Okay.
So you're just changing the title?
All right.
Well, in every...
And then everywhere it's posted.
Yeah, everywhere it says.
Okay, you get that, just Jim, Wendy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did anybody have anything else?
No.
Okay. I just have, Dr. Martis, I just want to ask you. We had, I know that in our last meeting in December, you wanted to have the opportunity to review a lot of the instructional goals and the items policies under I with Debbie Spinelli. And you've been so busy. Whether that got done tonight, if we take a vote for first reading though, there were some that you're gonna review. I don't want to say yes, I'm okay with that, and you come back and tell us that we want changes.
Those are on hold. Those are on hold.
Yeah, so we're not, they're not included. All the I's on hold? Yeah, all the ones that say on hold.
There's a lot of them that say on hold.
No, there are some that, there are some that aren't listed on hold that Dr. Martis said he was gonna review with Debbie Spinelli.
Which one are you referring to, Kate?
I have IA.
Wendy, do you have the list, Wendy, the whole list?
Right on the index, it tells you which ones are on hold.
So if you go to the I index?
Yeah, right in that section. Okay, so IA was...
Okay, so like IJNDB is on hold. IJNDB, IJND, IHCA. Most of them on the second page, not the first page. Third page, a lot of them on holds. Second and third page, the index, mostly on hold.
So is IA, is the purpose, we don't need to take a vote? We're just doing the first read?
We're doing the first read.
But does this mean, for instance, that IA, we're reading it tonight? Or, Dr. Martis, have you had a chance to review that one with Debbie Spinelli?
I have not, no.
Okay, so I guess that's the only...
We could put that one on hold.
Could IA on hold?
All right, so on the hold list is IHBH. IH, and I might have missed it, but I don't see IHBH on the hold list. And that was another one.
Alter the school programs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, I haven't reviewed that, but we, I think, I thought we agreed that that would be on the list. So we'll add that to the hold list.
If we could add that to the, I just want to be sure.
JFAB, non-resident students.
Right. This was a new one that came to us when it was yellow. And I marked that, that Dr. Martis was gonna review. Because one of the things we kicked around, that we said, we want Medco to, I thought Medco was tapped at forty-five, not fifty-five. So I'm not sure that Jim put those changes. It is fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Okay, and have you had a chance to review this? So you're comfortable with this?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this. No, it is fifty-five, I actually checked it out.
Well, you were going to check, that's why I just want to make sure that it's...
It is fifty-five.
So that's okay, good, that's great. See, I don't want to be approving something and find out, guess what, we didn't do it right.
Yeah, right.
Under JH, which got omitted from the yellow because that was being worked on by our administrator. It was the, JH was the Student Absences and Excuses. We had said we were gonna then omit that. So does this mean we will not have a policy on student absences?
All right, what's in there, it's supposed to be?
JH.
There's no J.
I don't think we saw that.
We omitted it, but we said we were gonna work on it later. When it got to the yellow, we said no, we said we're not gonna work on it later, we just omitted it. It is a source for MASC with a legal reference for MASC general law. So I just want to ask the question, are we saying that we don't need this, we don't need an attendance policy?
Why don't you check with Jim?
Yeah, the high school is fifteen days, the middle school is five days, the elementary seven days.
You know, I think it's because it's, we omitted it because it's in the handbook. And because we, that's what it was, because we approved the handbooks.
That's right, okay.
I'm pretty sure that's what the discussion, am I wrong?
No, I think you're right.
I think we should check on it.
Check with Jim, but I think it's...
This is an issue that's new and dear to their hearts.
No, I know.
And if we say we're not going to, I just want to hear from the administrators and Dr. Martis that we really don't need...
I think the conversation was, it's incorporated in the handbooks.
Yeah, we can, but we can, if you check with Jim, we can also raise it with our administrators on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, unless I'm wrong, I do JL? I had in my notes that Dr. Martis wanted to review this with Debbie Spinelli and that it was on hold, but it's not been marked hold.
Yeah, put this one on hold, we have not reviewed that.
That's okay, I just, see, I don't want to say that we've had a first reading when we've not really, we've not given you sufficient time to...
Okay.
She's actually working on emergency plans anyway, so...
And that one was on hold. And I don't know where it was, and I missed my tab, but we created, we changed the terminology in December for our health, and we wanted to insert the word wellness. I can't even, was that in curriculum? I can't find where that one is. That must be under students. There's a type, we don't, Jim didn't pick up on that change totally. It's only half inserted. Must be under students. Maybe I'll just have to wait until the second reading because I can't, I really can't find it. He put in wellness, but it needs a slash and an, we wanted health and wellness as that title because that's what we call it, that's what we said we wanted to call it, to be put in throughout that policy. I'm sorry, I can't find it now. Perhaps I can, it says student, it's our health and wellness policy. And just for this, I like to put it on hold because it also says that we'll be through grades five through eight. And we specifically also wanted nine and ten covered because that's also under the, and it's not...
So where's it from?
I can't find it right now.
Is it health and wellness education, IHAN?
It's look there, thank you, Katie.
I was looking in the index.
IHAN, I haven't found it yet, but...
Health, wellness, education.
That's exemption. Education.
I have no idea where it is and I don't have a tab.
Well, you can cover it the next time, right?
Right, I just, I would just...
Yeah, don't get pressured.
It's just, it didn't, Jimmy has done a wonderful job, but what struck me is that there were too many things missing. Some got captured, some didn't, and I think it's a very important policy, that does deal with our wellness policy.
Okay, just find it for the next, for the next one, we can change it with a second. Do you have anything left? Katie, anyone else?
No.
Okay. So this theoretically, legally, is our first reading. Wendy, you want to put it on again, Larry?
I would like to put it on for our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight.
Deb still won't be here for that meeting, no?
Maybe the week after.
All right, then let's do it the week after.
Just in case she has anything, I don't want to...
All right, so the first meeting in March.
Perfect. And maybe that'll give us a little time too with some of the holds.
And to look at some of the holds.
Because they're about thirty-five now, so maybe...
That also gives the public a couple of weeks if they have any questions.
If they want to look at it, yeah.
We talked about submitting them or writing to us. So that would give them an opportunity to do that and not feel pressured.
Okay.
The other point I just wanted to bring up, and I know we talked about it in one of our meetings. Do we want to, as a group, on this policy manual, quote the source? For some reason, in the yellow to the green, we're not saying where the source is. And I think we should cite either previous policy or MASC so that as a way of keeping updated and current and keeping this a living document. For example, I had to go back to the white and yellow copies to say, what the heck do we have a written policy that says whatever? And then I realized it's because MASC recommends it because it goes with our strategic plan, but it's not listed MASC or strategic plan.
Yeah, but a lot of these came, a lot of these policies came about because we just plain simple didn't have them. And that MASC recommended, or because of state law, we were missing them. So, I don't know, it says, the other, you're right, the other ones did say it was MASC because it made us aware that we didn't even have a policy in that area. Now whether you want to turn around and focus on that again, I don't know. The fact that it's here, that's what's important. You know, I think the reference in MASC was just to highlight to us that we didn't have that policy, what we're putting this together.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that because that would tell us where to go to look as we're updating it or as we change things. It might make it easier for us to...
It's on every sheet from before.
We didn't get carried forward.
Yeah, so he has the data.
Yeah, we can have that.
No, but I'm saying that's how it came about the first one.
No, we wanted it, and then we said, no, 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 we're not gonna need it because we're gonna keep a living document. But now as I'm reading this, it was really easy to see those that were MASC general law or cross-referenced or whatever. We just, I'd like to see the MASC ones put in.
I still think Jim's in shock that we got penises quicker than we did.
Katie, you all through Martha or?
I'm all through.
All right, Chris, how it matters?
I just have one, actually, and recognition that will, that's timely. We didn't have time to invite the students, but I want to mention it tonight and then we'll invite the students going forward. This is a letter from Jerry Roy. "The Art Department of Foxborough Public Schools is proud to announce that six students received seven individual awards and one student captured a portfolio award at this year's Scholastic Art Awards Contest sponsored statewide by the Boston Globe. The Art Department would like to recognize and congratulate Carolyn Augusta, Gold Key Award in Stone Carving; Christopher Crocker, Gold Key Award in Computer Graphics; Danielle Gentili, Silver Key and Honorable Mention Award, Print and Functional Pottery; Mary Greeley, Honorable Mention Award in Computer Graphics; Taylor Martinelli, Silver Key Award in Stone Carving; and Ryan Walzer, Walter, Honorable Mention in Computer Graphics. We're also pleased to announce that Matthew Pillsbury has won a prestigious Gold Key Portfolio Award for his photography portfolio." So again, congratulations to those students, and we'll invite them to official meeting.
Art Department.
Katie? Martha? The only thing I would say is that I did get back feedback from each of you on the school committee's annual report that goes in the town report. I made some changes based on your feedback. You should have a copy in your packet. We put out there tonight for the audience, not only the school committee, but also each of the individual schools also do a report in the town report. And that was out there for everybody tonight as well. And I believe Wendy gave a copy of that.